Six. I did also want to mention our grant-funded programs. Currently, we've got over $2.3 million currently in grants that are brought into the county through the Health Department. We don't use all those grant dollars at the Health Department. We actually pass some of those through to other agencies in the community. We've got, we passed about a quarter of a million dollars of state funding to the Vitac Medical Center to help fund the nurses at Pitt County schools. Just this year, we got an additional grant of about $40,000 that we passed to Vitac Injury Prevention Program to help create safe routes to schools for children in the region. We passed some state money to Picasso, the Pitt County Aid Service Organization, to help people with HIV or AIDS. We also receive a lot of grant dollars from local and state and even federal sources. We've received grants from the Vitac Medical Center Foundation, the Martin-Pitt Partnership for Children, or Smart Start, United Way, Women to Women, local services like Rotary, Lions Club, for different projects. As I mentioned, those 35 cost centers, a lot of these we fund with these, with these grants that are coming in locally. One grant that I will mention, Community Transformation Grant, is a big federal grant that was, it's being also eliminated this fall due to federal government cutbacks. That was over a half a million dollars per year and funded four and a half positions. It was a nine-county regional project working on three issues: active living, healthy eating, and decreased smoking. These are major causes of obesity and poor health for our region. So, we were sad to see that go, but it looks like it will go away in September on the federal The other thing I mentioned about grant funds is we don't, we don't let these grant-funded programs migrate to county-funded programs. In other words, we tell the staff, just like we've done with CTG, that, you know, as long as we have the funding, that grant funding, then you have a job. If that grant funding goes away, then we riff those positions, and that's what we plan to do. So, if there are other positions that open up, or other grant funding that we get in that we can help support positions, or keep those staff on, we certainly try to do that. But, I don't want you to think that we're, we're putting the responsibility back on the county for some of these grant funds that we're bringing in. One of our big issues this year is electronic medical records. We've got to make the transition to electronic medical records in order to meet our quality improvement goals and to avoid potential penalties. We do anticipate making a decision this summer, and we, we've actually applied for and hope to receive soon some federal grant dollars that will help us fund our electronic medical record effort. I will mention, too, we have a quality improvement team that we've had for several years now. This team has been trained in lean management. We are regularly doing Kaizen events, and we use short-cycle plan-do-study-act cycles to improve what we do and how we do it. We do anticipate, not just this year, but in probably the next several years, with healthcare reform, the Affordable Care Act, and potential state Medicaid reform in particular. We get a lot of our funding through Medicaid, as I mentioned. We're anticipating some very significant changes over the next several years, and this is partly where our electronic medical records is going to make a, a big difference. But, we, we've got to institute that, or we will be facing some penalties that I think would, would not, none of us would be happy with. With that, I'll be glad to take your questions if you have specific.
Thank you, Dr. Mall. It looks like you and the manager meet, and I work easy. It's good when you go through and present a budget and you do not have some pros and cons on it. But, that having been said, does the board have any questions? Start with Mr. Gage.
I just have one observation, and it's a compliment to you and your organization. I'm very pleased that you were able to manage in a way this year so that you didn't.
The hospital went nonprofit. It was brought up that one of the things that the hospital was going to do was going to keep these nurses in these schools. And if I'm not mistaken, did you say that you were having to pay for part of these nurses now, and the public nurses that are in the schools? Or, I didn't?
We, we don't have to. There is state funding that's been allocated for school nurses.
Yes.
And we receive, Pitt County receives a quarter of a million dollars of those state funds that are designated for school nurses. We just passed that quarter of a million dollars to Vitac Hospital. Now, that doesn't fund their whole program. That only funds about five of their nurses over there. So, they've got a whole team of nurses. Vitac puts a lot more money in addition to that.
They are still subsidizing the school system here in Pitt County.
Absolutely.
That's why, so therefore, we, the taxpayers, are not having to do that.
No county dollars of that.
That's good.
No, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your report and supporting what has already been said. Thank you for coming to us with such a good report. Just kind of a question. Transition to the electronic medical records, is there any type of training that needs to be done now so we won't get into debacle, I don't know what else to call it, when we start trying to get online?
Right. We've actually already had some training. We piloted an electronic medical record about five years ago that the state is still supporting pieces of. That one hasn't, not gone well, and we were one of just a couple of pilots in the state that did that. But, but when we did that, we trained our staff, we put computers in our clinic. So, they've had some, what they call sandbox training in electronic medical records. When we look to buy new electronic medical record, which is what we're talking about, there will be additional training that will have to take place. I've talked to some of the health directors who have implemented electronic medical records in the last six months across the state, and they're looking at some of the same vendors that we are. It's varied a little bit, but the transition has gone fairly smoothly. They thought they might have to decrease their appointments for, say, a month or two getting their staff trained. That, that really hasn't come to fruition. They've been able to get back up to speed within, sometimes within a week or two. So, we're optimistic that, that we can provide the training that's necessary, that we won't have to decrease our services for very long. We know we'll have to do it a little bit, but we're, we're going to work to shorten that time period as much as possible and make the transition as smooth as we can.
So, we can start the training ahead of when it has to come on?
We will, yeah.
Okay.
And those vendors will provide that training to us as part of the negotiation, so.
I felt that that would be happening, but I just wanted to give you a chance to say it.
Well, I, I will tell you that there have been health departments across the state that have failed miserably in implementation over this, but it's, that's been going on for 20 years. So, Guilford County bought a system, I think almost 20 years ago, and I don't know if Scott was there at that time, but within about six months, the company went belly up and they got nothing. You know, some of the other counties have had similar issues. So, we've, we've been sitting back watching and waiting to make sure that these things are, are operating smooth before we jump back into that foray, and I think, I think we'll avoid some of the, some of the heartaches and pain that other counties have experienced.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, Dr. Mall, we appreciate you, and Mr. Manager, we're ready for the next show.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Next, you have the Department of Social Services. You have Earl Merritt, your interim director, will come forward, and any other staff he's going to have to present.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Hard to believe about, I came here about three and a half months ago.
Thank you.
And when I came, we had a real crisis with our food stamp distribution. We had thousands, thousands behind. People weren't getting their benefits, and we really had a, a really bad situation. Happy to report to you this morning that for the last few days, we haven't had any reviews, and we're in good shape there. But, we do have a crisis looming in Medicaid. In that particular program, we're not able to process all the applications and to process the reviews. As I reported to you earlier, we have, need additional staff in the Public Assistance Program. Also, it wasn't reported when I came, was we had a real backlog in child abuse investigations, a serious, serious problem. We had some caseworkers that had 43 cases, they're not supposed to have it 10, and some several into 30s. This puts children at risk, and that, that is a terrible situation. We've been able to do some things in the Child Welfare Program, like staffing cases weekly. We had a supervision problem that we resolved, and we're working on that backlog. But, part of the problem with that is that we don't have adequate on-call workers, so the social workers that do investigations during the day have to do them at night, too, and get further behind. And we have, we generally have a lot of vacancies. We're presenting our budget today. Let's see, I can't, where we are here? Just slide. Huh? Okay. Hmm? I don't know. We show our total budget for 2014 and 15, and 64% of that is for services programs, child welfare. 20% is for public assistance, 8% is administration, and 8% is child support.
The public information staff is trying to upload the PowerPoint presentation now. The board has a copy, an hard copy in front of them.
Okay.
They're trying to get on the screen at the same time.
As you see on the second page, as we do a six-year county funding comparison. There we go.
Might as well have put that up there. Not for me, I can't see it, not by the rest of them. But, go ahead, sir.
Anyway.
She's going to get it up there.
And this year, '14, '15, we're asking for the same thing. In 2007, we had 22,000 Medicaid recipients, and we had 19,000 food and nutrition. We have over 31,000 in each one of the programs, so you can see a great deal of growth in the number of recipients that we've had. We've given you productivity studies before, but in public assistance, in April, we did, had 6,982 cases by 68 staff, so they did 102 by each worker, and we had 69 undone by each worker, or 67 undone by each worker. And it shows here that we need 36 more staff. In the budget, we're asking for 28. We were asked to work within a certain number, and, and we have done that. In child welfare, in 2009, we had 840 reports accepted, and we had 12 IAT positions. In 2013, we had 1,016 reports of neglect and abuse, and we had 12 workers. We're asking for two more on-call workers and one more daytime worker.
Mr. Merritt, can you tell them what IAT is?
That's a social worker investigation, assessment, and treatment work. They, they take the reports of neglect, abuse, or dependency. And as you know, we have to do some of those immediately, some of them within 24 hours and some of them in 72 hours. We, one way we sought to accomplish this, and I heard the discussion in the chair's budget, was to quit funding the deputies both at this building and at the other building. While security is a concern, it's not a concern for people, grown adults behind locked doors as it is for children who are neglected and abused. And if we cannot get to those investigations on an immediate, or the timelines, and they're supposed to have 10, they're supposed to have no more than 10 investigations going at any time, we're putting children at risk, and children could and will die if we don't do our investigations on a timely basis. So, as I said, we ask for two more on-call workers, nighttime, weekend-on-call workers, and one more during the day. Also, in the Medicaid program, if we do not get additional workers, we cannot take and process the Medicaid applications. Same situation. People will not provide medical benefits anymore if they don't have coverage. We put children and disabled adults at, at risk of death. I know you have many priorities. I know you have a very difficult task, and oftentimes, we look at the public assistance programs as just doing paperwork and don't look at the outcomes. Everybody in the food and nutrition program are, you know, desperately need food, but we can do food vouchers in some cases for food and nutrition people, but we cannot provide medical benefits. I think it's imperative that we get these new workers, that we get them trained, and that we be able to take and process our Medicaid applications. We have a real crisis coming. The food and nutrition one won't even compare once it happens, and as I said, we'll be putting children and disabled adults at risk. Can I answer any questions?
Mr. Manager, you won't respond before we get into questions?
Only in the respect that when we first started the budget process with DSS, the county, the additional county dollars was going to be about $500,000. I did tell Mr. Merritt that we gave him a goal of $200,000 and see what he could work with on that, and basically, he's asking for almost the same number of positions, and I think they have, as I understand it, they have, have adjusted the federal and state participation amounts. Before, it was about 50/50, and now it's about 75/25. So, he's still able to do about the same number of positions with less dollars, but just didn't want to point that out. But, I think what Mr. Merritt is alluding to with Medicaid, it is the next tsunami coming in terms of, just like the food stamp issue was, except for, I think, the consequences of the medical treatment under Medicaid is probably, like he's trying to point out, a more severe situation that's, that's impending.
Yeah. Okay. Questions?
And he, he just said 28 and 3, which is 31, and that's what we have in, in your proposed budget, right?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Think you can work with that?
Yes, sir. The 28 probably won't be enough, but we're, we're measuring productivity every month, every day. We're seeing, we're working on a variety of things. The technology staff has been great working with us. We've got about nine projects going right now. We instituted a hunt system for telephone calls because we had such a terrible time getting the phones answered. I think that's resolved a lot of the problem. People who are calling about issues with their benefits right now, we have a system set up. They've done a wonderful job over there reorganizing, organizing their work, attending to situations when they get calls. I hope all of you have been getting a lot fewer calls than you had before. When I first went there, apparently, many of them had, people had Mr. Perry's telephone number, and he was taking care of it because it was ringing all day long with issues. Very rarely do I ever get one now. The bulk of what I'm getting now is child welfare, so.
I appreciate your transition that you've made so far, and hope you continue to do good work, Mr. Webb.
What happens if we don't meet the goal?
Children won't.
No, I mean, besides, I'm talking about with the Medicaid, what happens with the federal government if we don't get rid of that law?
They've not listed any consequence right now. They've not come out and stated a consequence, but more importantly to me is the fact that children and disabled adults won't get their medical benefits.
Sure. I think we can all agree with that, but is there anything done to address fraud in the system? Every time I've visited down there, there's been a lot of ambulatory people that look like they're well, well able to get a job. Is there anything done to encourage people to work? Because we've got about, I think it was 500 jobs, decent-paying jobs in Pitt County, and a lot of people will not.
We have a work-first program that works with people who try to get a work-first check on a monthly basis, and they, that is paid, work-for-performance. So, they have to apply for so many jobs before they're eligible to get that check. We did have an issue when I got here of too many people getting what's called a H code. It didn't require them to do that, but we've rectified that situation. We do have, we do have fraud workers. Ms. Burns can come up.
Tell you.
Something about that, if you'd like to know more about that.
I just, I didn't know. I know because the standards really come from the federal government, not us. It's just, to me, when we spend this money, and not just this money, when, I think it's almost a quarter of a billion dollars that comes through, and I see a lot of able-bodied people receiving these things, and, and there's open jobs all over the county, I just, you know, taxpayers' money is sacred to me. I mean, that's their life. It's not just dollars. It's money we take from their home, money we take from their vehicles, money we take out of their checks, and it just bothers me because I, I went to a presentation on these things with NACA one year, and, and really, I can see why people don't leave the programs, and it just costs us more money, because from what we were told by this professional was that for someone to leave, when you add up all the benefits they receive, whether it's medical, food, housing, everything, they would have to get a job that they clear $65,000 a year after taxes to equal the amount of benefits that they're currently getting. And that's what frustrates me about it. It's not, this isn't any of your responsibility or realm of control, just venting. But, anyway, I just, I'm glad to know that we do have someone checking on fraud and under.
Many, many, many of the people that we serve work. They work in hourly wage jobs, they pay in minimum wage jobs, and they're able to survive because they get help with food and they get help with medical.
Well, those are the people I want to help, and I think they should be at the front of the line.
And, and believe it or not, a, a huge percentage of the people that we serve work. They work in our service industries, but as I said, they work in hourly wage jobs, and they don't have any benefits.
Sure. Well, that's who we want to help, and we want to make sure that they're at the front of the line and getting service before someone who refuses to work does.
And I agree with that 100%. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. That end, Mr. Webb?
Yes, sir.
Mr. James?
I think what the last thing he said that so many people do not understand, Commissioner Webb, that many of the clientele that we have, they have a job, but they don't make enough money to live on. Try living on $7 an hour, paying rent, and all of these other things, and it's an impossibility. I, but I have several things that I want to thank you, of course, for. First, let them, I think you're doing these things now, letting the employees carry, work home with them. And would it be advantageous that for some of these people to buy them a computer, let them have it at home? Do a lot of this work at home, would that be a good investment? I guess that's my first question.
We've, we've tested taking a laptop and letting somebody take it home to do reviews and to do applications. In both situations, in the reviews, they don't have to have face-to-face contact, they can work over the telephone, and they can get their work oftentimes done that way. They were able to do twice as many reviews from home as they were at work because they didn't have as many distractions and they weren't stopped.
I think that's something that we need to look at, thereby, we could get so much more work done by our employees, and they will not be under the pressure, at some telephones and things such as that. The next thing that I have been very much interested in is Pitt Community College. Training our personnel to take and to be able to do the job, to do it quicker. In other words, I know from farming and business that I'm in, if they are trained and prepared to do the job, they're going to do much more work for what, than what they do, it would do if they weren't trained properly. What is being done pertaining to that?
We've worked with Ms. Mary Paramore at Pitt Community College, and she's done a profile and has identified the characteristics that make people successful as an income-maintenance caseworker. Other work has been done like this across the state, too, and, and there are certain characteristics. If people don't score very well, they're, they're just not very capable of doing that. She's got that available for us. We can use that as part of our interview process and have a better sense of who can, who will be successful and who won't be, and who will be the most productive. She's also developed a course, a 40-hour course, that people can go through when they get out of school. If they do the profile, if they look like they'll be successful, then they can go to that 40-hour course, and we will have a better sense of somebody who, who can do the work and is going to be productive and, and will be farther along than we have been before.
Are we stressing the importance that these employees must be butter-trained if they're going to continue to be employed by the county, by the Social Service Department of Pitt County?
We, we're looking at productivity, and people who fall well below the mean of how much they produce in today's time, we're train, retraining, we're taking them in and retraining and trying to help them increase their productivity through repetition and through training. If the situation comes that they're just not capable of doing the work, then we'll have a personnel issue that we'll have to deal with. But, it's vital that we increase, we increase our capacity. The number of people here still is not going to increase our capacity. One of the IT projects that we have is that we're going to scan food and nutrition reviews when they come in. We can do those, one person can do them, they can attach them to the case, and we won't have to deal with all that paper. We can also scan in any changes, or either take them at the front desk or scan in any changes, like change of address, change of household, all those different changes. So, that paper won't be going all over the office, too. Obviously, that'll make our people more productive because they can, they can stay at the computer and they can work on the application, or they can work on the review. We see that's got a lot of potential. We haven't, we haven't finished that project, but all the projects we've done, I've worked with IT staff, they've done, they're doing timelines for, for me, who's responsible, when, and how they're going to progress. So, we won't just sit around, it's, in my experience, IT projects, you sit around and talk about them, and you say, oh, this would be lovely to have, and everybody gets excited, and then they go about their daily task, and they don't get back to it. We have plans for all the projects that we're doing. We recently got cell phones for the child welfare workers, so everybody's accessible to everybody now. They can take pictures or videos out in the field, they can send them to their supervisor, whoever's supervising them at the same time. Sometimes you have to have a two-party before you make a decision. Their supervisor will have the information that they have. We're also trying to get them access to the Central Registry for Child Welfare, for DMV, for license checks, and for Administrative Office of Court for criminal checks. We're also looking at a program over in Lenora County, a very inexpensive one, but one at least that we can get everything, the cases online, so if they're out in the field. the cases online. So if they're out in the field, they can look at whatever case, cases that we've got open, whatever information we have, and try to be more efficient that way, too.
And I hope that you're having in-service training for your employees, such as education has done this for years and years. But I want each of you all, if you will, look on page two that he has talked to us about. And if you look at the top graph, you know, I don't get too, you have to base it on it. But if you'll take notice, we have gone back up now to about the 2013, as far as the fund that is concerned, which is a big improvement, Mr. Chairman. But if you look down on the very bottom chart, if you go down to look at the number of recipients that we have on that particular page, look how they have gone up. They have been going, they've gone up here from 19,361 to 31,469. That is where we are having such a, a big problem with not having enough, of course, personnel, or else they're not being trained to take and to be prepared to it. But I wanted to bring those things out, of course, since I am on the Social Service Board, that I think a lot of improvements are being made. They really are. And it's going to just take time and like, we're going to have to cooperate with Pitt Community College and these other people to get our people trained to take and do a better job. And I, let me say this to you, I appreciate you and what your staff is doing. There's lots more to be done, and I know that. But we can't do it all in one year, and I'm hoping that each year that we will continue to improve. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. James. Ms. Ward?
Two things. Do we have a number of the recipients of either Medicaid or whatever area we're talking about?
Yes, I'm.
That are not, that are not working? You said there were many of them, a large number, who were working. I just wondered if we had a number of recipients who are not working.
I don't have it with me right now, but I can get it in and, and send it to the county manager and get it out.
Okay, good. That'll be great. The other thing, piggybacking on the program with, some type of program with Pitt Community College, the offering a course, and I sit on that board, so I've heard some of this from that end also. And I know I'm not looking to increase their budget either. But the program they do with the local high schools, where they actually teach classes, it focused on an associate degree in a specific area, which could be like welding or auto mechanics or whatever. I wondered if you all had ever talked to them about something like that.
This is more, the requirements for the position require more than a high school degree. And this is more for your two-year graduates, or your four-year graduates from ECU. And it's a one, it's like a one-week.
Which one, the one you're doing, the week, the course?
The one we're proposing.
Okay. But what I'm saying is.
But we do have, we do have, excuse me, we do have a couple of our foster children that we're trying to incorporate into working over there. My experience in Johnston County, that we were able to bring some of those kids along. And, and two of them are doing just what I was talking about earlier. They're scanning in the food and nutrition reviews when they come in every day. They're attaching them to the case in NCFAST, and they're doing that. So there is opportunity there. But as you know, our foster kids, we end up being their parents.
To clarify, these are foster children who have aged.
I understand. I mean, I dealt with that situation myself.
Specifically for the high schools? No.
Okay, but I'm not really talking about those people who are in high school, who are advancing. I'm talking about the adults that Commissioner Webb was speaking of, that are, even those who are already employed, who could increase their employability if they could get that kind of training. And I'm not saying I expect you to be doing it now. But I'd like for us to think a little bit out of the box and maybe see if there's a possibility that something like that could happen with people who already have high school.
Ms. Paramore was very excited about this profile because she said people may not profile for an income maintenance caseworker, but they had a lot of other jobs. And we've worked with Mr. Neil Anderson from Workforce Solutions, an employment agency. He's been involved with us, too, and has some potential funding for some of these positions. And they said that they might identify people who met the profile for other open jobs here in the county when they did the profile. And that would be a spin-off of that and, and you know, a very productive one, too, I think.
But I'm, I'm speaking of training, not finding them jobs. Don't stop that. But I just think that there may be some people out there who are struggling finding some of these jobs that are available. And if there was some way we could train them, you know, at the time that they're recipients of this help. But that's just an idea. I'm not expecting you to respond, but I would like very much for you all to look and see if there's any possibility that we could help train these people who maybe already have a job or don't have a job at all.
We do have some opportunities through the Work First Program. But that has changed to the point, there used to be a jobs program that focused solely on training just about before the Work First Program. And, you know, in Johnston County, I don't know the numbers here, but in Johnston County, we had about 1,600 people getting checks. After the Work First Program came about, we ended up with about 45 people getting checks, and they're only a little over $200. One of the unintended consequences of that, though, is that people used to have more stable housing. And now they move in, maybe they get some money for the, for the utility deposit and the rent. They don't have it the next month. They go out two or three months, and then they're looking for another place to live. This has terrible consequences for children, for our school system, as they keep moving around and moving around. They move in with some friends, they move in with some family. And that's, although more people have gone to work, more people are working, it has made a very unstable situation with housing.
You finished, babe?
I'm through.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I guess my question is similar to what Commissioner Ward was talking about, the training. I want to thank you, first of all, on your working relationship with the manager, with our manager in terms of identifying your needs. It seems that you all have, had had a very good relationship in that. We can't give you everything, certainly those things that are workable and productive to keep your department moving forward. One of the couple of things that you talked about was the child abuse in that abuse area where you need more, more, more employees, and also in your Medicaid area. Now, I guess my question is, the cross-training, are we doing, how much of that are we doing? And if not, why aren't we doing it? If so, can we, can we utilize that more?
Well, we've used a lot of our resources. The answer to your question is yes, we do cross-train people. The NCFAST program initially was supposed to have a universal worker who could take an application for all programs at one time. This system hasn't worked quite that well, and the state's having to back up, and all counties are having to back up, too, because the system does require policy knowledge. We're trying to, to work in such a way, and I think we've done a pretty good job, of having our subject matter experts available to people who don't know policy, but who can, can work in the system and do the work to be able to answer questions for them. But we are organized now between applications, customer service, and reviews. Application is a new application, or if they, if families don't do the reviews in time, then they have to come back in and do another application. Review is a review of their eligibility at specified periods dependent on the program to see if they're continuing to be eligible or if they're not. So yes, we are cross-training as much as we can. The policy is very different between the Medicaid program and the food and nutrition program. And so now, our biggest issue is to get those applications taken, get those reviews done on a timely basis, and to use the experts in policy to answer those questions when they need, need them answered, or as they need them to do their applications or do their reviews.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Finish, Melvin?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there's no further questions, I've been harping on the fact that when you increase from about 22,000 to 32,000 people to be served, and from 19,000 to 31,000, no matter how much training you have, if you don't have enough people to do the job, you can't do it. And I think that's what the managers try to allude to, giving you sufficient people to do the job. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Next one, Mr. Manager?
Next, we have the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Mr. Chairman, can I just take a five-minute recess while they load this?
Please. We're back in session now, Mr. Manager. You got your next presenter?
Yes, sir. We have Andy Schmidt, who's the interim director with the Greenville-Pitt County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And I just want to give you guys an idea of where we're headed for the next year with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. As a reminder, just of what we do at the Convention and Visitors Bureau as a background, we have a lot of, of things that we're in charge of. However, some of the main things that we really want to accomplish is to create a positive economic impact through bringing conventions and meetings and tournaments and reunions and leisure travelers to Greenville and Pitt County. And we do a good job of that. The last numbers that we have in 2012, Pitt County is actually 22nd out of the 100 counties in North Carolina for tourism-related expenditures, just under $200 million a year. So we're excited about that, and we continue to move up on that list. We know that when tourism and travelers come to this area, they do make a difference into our local economy. When an individual comes for the day, they spend about $68 while they're here. And if an individual comes for a 24-hour period, they spend about $160 while they're here. And of course, the difference there is the hotel stay when they come. Doesn't sound like huge numbers, but when you start multiplying those numbers by 500, or 1,000, or 1,500, or 2,000, that really provides a good shot into the local economy. So that's one of the things that we want to do. We want to service our travelers that come to the Greenville-Pitt County area. We do have the most comprehensive complimentary services program in the state when you look at the different bureaus. And the reason we have complimentary services is that's the way that we fight for business, to come to Greenville and Pitt County. We fight other destinations for business. When a meeting or event planner or a tournament organizer looks at the state of North Carolina, we fight against Asheville, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, Chapel Hill, Raleigh, Durham, Wilmington, Fayetteville, Greensboro, all those different cities. We want to bring the event here over those cities. So one of the ways we do that is to provide a high level of service to those individuals that come. And our, our full-time convention services manager is Ethelene Hardy-Stover. She does a great job of doing that. We want to make sure that we're an information clearinghouse for individuals that are already coming to Greenville and Pitt County. And this past weekend with ECU graduation was a perfect example. We had lots of phone calls ahead of time, what can we do, where we can, where can we take our kid out to dinner, that kind of thing. But we also want to provide enough information out there to entice people to come to Greenville and Pitt County where they're not sure where they're going to spend their day, or maybe their evening. And I'm happy to announce, just last week, we launched our first app. It's called Visit Greenville NC, and it's available on iTunes and Google Play. You can go download that for free, and it's got a lot of great information about our area. And it also has the push notification systems where once you sign up, we can send you texts directly on the backend with our technology. So we want to make sure that we're getting that information out to individuals. And then we want to partner with the community. We want to make sure that we're active within other organizations and support them so they'll support us as well. And so what I've done as an interim has had our staff get active in other organizations. I'm on our chamber board now. Ethelene Hardy-Stover is on our intergenerational center board. We've got our administrative assistant Vera Blackwell serving on the Pitt County Arts Council, Pitt County Arts Council Marketing Committee. So we're all trying to take a little bit of a role within our community. So we want to partner, make sure that Greenville and Pitt County continues to grow. We are governed by a board, 11-person board, also with some liaisons. And those board members, five are appointed by the Greenville City Council, five are appointed by this board here, Pitt County Board of Commissioners. We have one appointee from the Chamber of Commerce, and then we have a city and county liaison. And our county liaison is Commissioner Coulson, and we thank him for his role and his consistency in attending meetings. We've had an awful lot of meetings in the last six months. So we appreciate your service. And we also are, have a city finance officer, Bernita Demery, with the City of Greenville serves as our finance officer, helps us craft our budgets, helps us with projections since we're funded through occupancy tax. Our approval process is pretty stringent. We have a four-step process. Our CVA executive committee, which is made up of four members first, goes through the budget and approves it. That's been done. Our full board has approved our budget. We presented to Greenville City Council on Thursday night, and we're here before you today. So it's a four-step process, provides a lot of opportunity for checks and balances, and that's a good thing as well. And just as a reminder, it may be more for the people watching at home, but the CVA does not receive any funds from the general fund, from either the city or the county. We're solely funded through the occupancy tax revenue stream. When individuals stay in our hotels, they pay the room rate, they pay sales tax, and then they pay a 6% occupancy tax. That tax is divided, 3%, that 6% goes to retire the debt on the convention center. That leaves 3%. Out of that 3%, 1/3 is given to the convention center for marketing, and 2/3 goes to do what we do at our convention, at our Convention and Visitors Bureau. We're not a membership organization, so we don't receive any membership funds as well. Just occupancy tax is how we're solely funded. And we're fortunate because Pitt County is a growing area, and we continue to add hospitality infrastructure, and that in turn helps to increase the revenue stream from the occupancy tax. You can see just as the summary that I have for you, FY 2012, just under $800,000. For 2013, we were just under $805,000. This year's been a very good year, and I'll touch on that in just a second. But we had originally budgeted for $810,000, and this is the first 3%, not the full 6%. And then 2015, we are projecting a 2.5% increase up to $131,200. So it's a steady increase, and that's very good for us because when you're dealing with occupancy tax and budgeting, you have to make sure that you're, you're doing it correctly. And so we have a lot of information that we get, forecasts, the STAR report, things that help us look at projections and how we think we're going to end up for the year. I told you this year's a very good year. Currently, right now, our occupancy tax is up 6.74% versus last year. So I'll go back just a second. This FY 2014 number, our projections were 810,100, and we're up about 6.74% from that number for this upcoming year. So we're doing well with our occupancy tax figures. We did take a conservative approach, and you'll see this in just a minute when I talk about the upcoming budget year. Worked with, again, our city finance officer, Bernita Demery, and we estimated a 2.5% increase over the previous numbers. So it's more of a conservative approach. I'd much rather take a conservative approach and have a little bit left over than take a more of a liberal approach and have to scramble and try to figure out where to find funds. So the 2014-2015 budget is based on a 2.5% increase. Before we talk about next year, I want to just give you a quick summary of where we are this year in our budget year. Our fiscal year expenditures will come in under budget this year. You saw that $810,000 budget that we had in place for this year. It will come in under budget. And there's a couple of reasons for that. It's not that we're not, not doing our jobs, but we have a current staff situation at our office. Our executive director, who is Debbie Vargas, took early retirement in November, and I've been the interim since that time. And I've also, I've been doing the sales and marketing for the bureau, too. So we're a staff member down. And when you're a staff member down, you're not going to have the salaries and benefits paid out like you normally had budgeted for. So that's one reason we're under budget. We did put funds in to relocate. Currently, we're inside the convention center. We will be moving. The convention center is going to be expanding, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. But that is going to take up some space, and we're going to be looking for a new home. But we had put that in the budget this year and did not use that relocation money, so it will be recycled into next year. And we have not traveled as much this year because of our current staff situation. Again, being a staff member down, not as much travel, not enough people to travel sometimes. So we're a little bit under budget this year. Let me highlight the 24-2015 budget for you. Our budget for the 2014-2015 fiscal year is set at $929,806.94. Our budget for the 2014-2015 fiscal year is set at $929,806.94. Out of that number, occupancy tax collections are projected at $831,200. As you've seen, right now, we're at a 6.74% increase. We feel like those numbers will come in higher, so the amount of fund balance that we would have to use will be reduced. But currently, right now, we're projecting fund balance at $98,606.94. We actually, going through this year's budget, the upcoming year's budget, we were actually able to... It's less this year than it was last year, our budget is. And part of the reason is rebranding has been completed, and we did a large rebranding project, if you follow the City of Greenville. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to use this PowerPoint instead of the first one submitted, because we finally have the new rebranding templates, and I want you to see it. But the completion of rebranding has allowed for our advertising line item to be reduced a little bit when you look at it this year compared to last year. We're actually advertising more this upcoming fiscal year. We have a much more aggressive media schedule. However, we don't have the creative costs that you have with rebranding that we incurred this past year. So, we're able to take that line item down a little bit. We're pushing free resources much more this year. Social media is something that I'm sure you're all aware of, and currently, our CVB is on Twitter, Pinterest, Facebook, YouTube, and we're... And I'm sorry, Twitter, yeah. So, we've got five different social media outlets that we're using, and those are all free mediums of advertising. You can spend money advertising on Facebook if you'd like or Twitter, but those are things that we're doing to try to alleviate the costs. And so, our social media program has really grown, and I would really encourage you to go to one of our social media pages and take a look at it. It looks really very good. Utilizing more digital media instead of print ads. Digital media can be manipulated quicker and faster for changing things. And then we also have initiated what we call our Green Printing Initiative for next year. And that's really an environmental initiative that we'd like to put in place. Instead of printing lots of different things, we're printing three documents next fiscal year. One is our Visitor's Guide, one's our LAP map, and the other is our Lodging Supplemental Guide. So, that's it, three. Everything else is going to be in electronic form, and that's for two reasons. It's for the environment, it's for cost, and then really, for a third reason is Pitt County's growing so fast. By the time you put something in print, it's not accurate anymore. So, we're going to use that as a way to keep our budget in check and also assist with the environment. In 2014-2015, funds have been earmarked for some special projects. Technology is something that we're really trying to hit hard at our office. Work smarter, work faster. When you are sometimes limited by staff numbers, technology obviously is a good alternative to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish. So, we've got some money to develop some new technology with the goals of both marketing and informing. And we have two initiatives that we're trying to put forth next year, and at the end of this presentation, if you'd like me to elaborate, I will. But we've got two technology initiatives that we'd like to develop using those funds. Funds have also been budgeted for incentives within the meetings and conventions market. As I'm sure this board is aware, the Convention Center is going to undergo an expansion here shortly, and also an aesthetic outfit. It's going to look completely different than it looks now. We're going to add nine breakout rooms to the Convention Center. And if you go through our lost business reports of why groups don't pick the Convention Center over other convention centers across the state, number one is the way it's configured, there's not enough breakout space. And number two, it's a nice building, but it certainly doesn't look like some of the other convention centers look. It looks more like a civic center, and that's just being honest. So, the aesthetic outfit's going to be just as important as the addition of breakout spaces. So, we want to make sure that we're at the table for that as well, so we've got some incentive money to utilize for that. And then we also have in our budget, for the first time, a new position, a communications assistant. The communications function of any bureau is critical. Our bureau hasn't added staff since 1992, and that's because of the way things have occurred with the Convention Center funding. But we have the opportunity to add a communications assistant for this next fiscal year, and she is outstanding. How we came about this position, we actually had two part-time positions in our budget for this particular year that you're in, that we're in. One was for rebranding, and one was for part-time communications. Rebranding was completed in October of 2013. We were so impressed with this individual that we put her into the part-time communications position. And when we started crafting this year's, upcoming year's budget, we saw that the two part-time positions could make a full-time salary. So, really, the only differentiation in this year's budget would be adding benefits. So, our board unanimously approved the addition of a communications assistant. And part of her job is to create our social media and so forth. She's very good. She's taught me a lot, actually, about social media. So, we're excited about that opportunity. We also have funds included for CVA relocation. We're currently negotiating a lease for a space in the uptown Greenville area, and hopefully that'll be concluded this week. The Convention Center, with its expansion, their staff members are going to move up front and occupy our office space because, in order to save some funds, one of the offices where they're currently in is going to be a breakout area. So, that really will help to reduce construction costs. And we'd like to be in the uptown Greenville area. We think that that's a much more traveled area. We lose people coming into our facility, our visitor center, when the Convention Center's full because there's no place to park. If you look at the top 10 cities, we're 10th in the state as far as population. None other visitor centers are all downtown. We're really kind of off the beaten path, and it's hard for people to find us. When people come in our office, it's a one-on-one marketing opportunity. We can talk to them. So, we are looking forward to being in the uptown Greenville area, and we hope that the lease that we're currently negotiating is working out. And to put everyone's mind at ease, you know, I had mentioned that Bernita is our finance officer. I went to Bernita as the interim director, and I said, "What can we afford?" And she gave me a number, and that's the same number that's been given to the individuals that we're negotiating with, and said, "Hey, if you can work with this, that's great. If you can't, let us know." And they're working with that number. So, it is not putting us over the edge as far as budget goes. As part of the inter-local agreement between the City of Greenville, the Convention Center, and the CVA, we are required to provide 1% of the 3% to the Convention Center for marketing. So, within our budget for 2014-2015, we do have $273,900 set aside for Convention Center marketing. So, that's what we're projecting, that the Convention Center folks will use to market the Convention Center. That is not a lump-sum payment, just to let you know. It's a monthly expenditure that I actually review each month. They send a request to me each month and say, "This is what we want to utilize for marketing." I'll look at it and approve it. It has to be approved by us first, by the CVA, and then we expend those funds on a monthly basis. So, it's a pretty straightforward budget, not a lot of changes from the previous year. The addition of a communications assistant is critical. But at this time, I'll be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Mr. James?
I'm on the Airport Authority. I travel around no motel anywhere close by the airport. All the businesses on the other side of the airport. These people that come here, and of course, the reason I'm saying this is because we have... They split the land to have a motel and so forth there. But yet, there's none that's modified. Well, you know that, and you probably know where I'm coming from, too, that we're trying to get that airport to improve, to grow, and let it be national, national-recognized. We're working to get another car system out there to go up north. And this is one of the things I think that would help this particular era. Are you all in the process, and we are not necessarily looking for a motel, but anything we can get that restaurant or whatever, because we do have the property. Are you all helping them recruit or to get something like that for the airport?
And one of the things in our 2014-2016 marketing plan is to get more involved in hospitality infrastructure product development. You know, when a hotel comes, unless it's going to be funded by a public source, it's always going to be a private entity that's going to make that decision. The best that we can do, Commissioner James, is to provide them the critical information that they need, and that's information on occupancy through the city. It's information on ADR, which is average daily rate for the hotels that are currently existing. So, you know, we can be supportive, but our office wouldn't be actively recruiting a hotel to come here.
I guess for me, for business person, you're only three minutes from the hospital. I mean, you're just straight drive that to them. Everything is ideally located from that for Pitt County. And why somebody hasn't... And we are progressive. I mean, we are really pushing and now hang us and so forth, and of course, they're doing good, and we've got a good board. But I hope the board will be thinking about that in any way that we can encourage the growth there around that airport will help us as the years come by to take and improve and to get that other car that we so badly need for industrial growth here in Pitt County. And I believe it would really be a plus for it.
Yeah, and I think in our industry, in the hospitality industry, we always have a saying, and it's "Activity spurs activity." So, if you were successful, and we'd love to see another airline come in, because currently, you've got a set number of people that you can get into Greenville and Pitt County per day. So, another airline, I think, would help that effort to maybe recruit some things coming down there.
I guess, and this is, I won't say anymore about it, but you take Neco. All of these big bits are there within three or four minutes of the airport. If you go to the motel, Smokey and Green, you know how long it takes you to go? 10 to 15 minutes with good driver to get there. So, it's... At night or something, it's so much more convenient. That's all I have to say, Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Garris?
The 6% occupancy tax, 3% goes to pay off the debt.
That's correct.
How much longer will it be for that will be paid off?
Well, with the expansion, it's going to be a longer period. The inter-local agreement has now just been approved through 2031. So, that would be my guess to when that debt may be paid off, is 2031.
When that is paid off, do you see that occupancy tax go into 3%?
You know what? That's a great question. I don't know. I know if you look across the state, there's only two or three destinations that are closest that has a current 3% occupancy tax is Wilson, and she's actually doing everything she can to get it to 6%. So, that would remain to be seen.
Is 6% the upper limit?
That's the highest she can go in the state of North Carolina.
The other question, the $98,000 you're planning on using from your fund balance or you've got in your budget, but your plan is not to use it because hopefully the occupancy tax revenue will be greater than...
It won't be... It will not reach that fund balance, not. But that's the... When you have to craft your budget four months before your final numbers are in, you have to do that.
I understand. My question is, what is your fund balance?
Fund balance that we have available, we can touch a certain percent of that, and that's about $700,000.
Thank you.
Any further questions? We thank you, appreciate your prep. Mr. Manager, you got anything you want to say?
I guess maybe regarding Commissioner Garris's question on the 3% that's currently dedicated towards debt service, I'd imagine by 2031, they'll want to either expand or renovate again. So, I would anticipate that 6% would probably always stay in place. But that's just...
I knew the answer to that question. Things never come down. But I just thought I'd entertain it anyway.
Correct. Otherwise, Mr. Chairman, board members, on the overall budget, you've now heard from all the scheduled department heads. Myself and Dwayne Holder have gone back and are looking at the input you've given us and would like to suggest that you meet one more time tomorrow morning, allow us to present to you the adjustments to the different departments that we have identified and looked at. Probably the biggest thing is kind of still not in place would be the governor's proposal for teacher raises and how those raises affect the 77.1 local positions here in Pitt County. Not knowing exactly whether it's a 2% cost of living and a $1,000 teacher increase, we have reached out to the school system. They're kind of hesitant because the General Assembly is just convening today, and nothing is carved in stone. So, we'll probably need to make some best guess estimations, projections of what that will be as we come back to you tomorrow, and show in the other areas, such as the Sheriff Department, Animal Control, areas where we've heard direction given to make adjustments.
All right, fine. Probably as one or two, I just wanted to make a little sideline address before we depart to leave. That being said, Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we spoke about this earlier. When it comes to merit pay, I know that there's not anything that we can do or room in the budget permanently for the employees. I know that we're looking at days off, but I was thinking if we could block aside some money and give them a choice, if they want the day or two off, they can take that. Or I think if every single employee, which isn't going to happen, got the merit, if we did $150 around Christmas, like a Christmas bonus for people who achieved above standard or whatever the PEP term is for, let them choose between the day off and $150. Then that would be $135,000 total if every single employee got it. That's estimating about 900 employees at $150 apiece, if my math in my head. But just something, you know, because sometimes, in rightsizing, days off have been harder to come by, I think, and that's happened throughout every organization. So, the people that do the work, they get the time, and then it's harder to take it off when they want to. I think, you know, most people can run $150 in a lot, but you can stretch it at Christmas time, especially to help buy gifts. I know it would go a long way in my home to get that kind of bonus. But again, it's not much, but it's just a monetary way to say thank you for all the hard work they've done throughout the year to achieve over what they've been set to do when they're getting minimal raises, things like that. Thank you.
You know, we've been dealing with the dog ordinance for some time, what, three, four months? I'd like to know, Scott, if you or anyone have any indication since on awareness has been an issue, if there's been a decrease in the number of ticks by dogs? Have any idea about that?
Well, I do know Animal Control's been tracking more closely the dog bite reports and data to the Animal Control Advisor Board since the beginning of the calendar year. I don't think there's been a decrease in the number of bites. It's pretty much held constant. We presented to you in the first day of the workshops the data. I think there is more awareness, Chairman Owens, like you're saying, that the county is getting serious about this and that an ordinance is impending that will be in place.
That brings me to my next observation. You know, we've had ordinance one, two, and three, but never enforced. I think if we can make people realize, and this be part of the ordinance, that all dogs must have an owner. That might be a broad, but in the ordinance itself, the dog has to have an owner. Why? Because that owner has certain responsibilities. That owner has control. That owner must get the shots. That owner must have the identification on them. The fees that we've talked about, that owner must do the fees, and that owner has to be on the... Be sure that his dog is on his property. That's the control that I talk about. I believe we need to put a little more meat into the ordinance in that we have reference to civil fine if there is a violation. We might need to couch that in a little different language because I believe by... The attorney and I talked about this, that it would be a misdemeanor anyway, but put it in the ordinance itself so that there's two contacts of that, the civil and the criminal, to let people know that they have a responsibility, they own this dog, and if they get out and bite, we hope nobody gets bitten. But if you get out and bite somebody, you got to pay. That's something I think we need to stress a little more in the written document itself before we have our public... When is your public hearing, Scott?
We have it scheduled for June 2nd.
All right, before then, so we could have that before the public hearing and have it in there. I believe also, in addition to that, there ought to be a little byline, a paragraph in this ordinance that says that Jimmy Garris, as a property owner, has got the right to defend his family and his property from vicious dogs. We had told to us here that two dogs came and broke into a screen porch. If I'd have been there, I know where the dog would have been. People wouldn't like it either. But we have a little line in this ordinance letting the property owners know that they've got these rights. They might be a little reluctant, but if you have it set out, they have that. And they've got that right to use whatever force is reasonable. I asked the lady the other day, where were these vicious and roaming dogs located? And I had a reason for that. She gave me, if I recall, two or three areas where maybe they were worse. But as a byline to that, are any of our... You might can't answer this, honey, back there, but are any... but are any of our bites, do we have any record that they were done by vicious or roaming You can tell me if you're right, those are. You stay too long if you go up there.
I want to make clear that it's not just stray abandoned dogs. A lot of the complaints, there was over 4,000 of them, that also include just neighborhood nuisance dogs where owners are not keeping their dogs on their property. So I don't want people to think that it's these pack...
Let's cut that right. I'm not talking about those. We have reference of roaming dogs, packs of dogs. Now, they have not attacked anybody or bitten anybody, have they?
What, the roaming dogs, the pack dogs?
Yes.
In some of the county areas, yes, and some of the...
That's my point. Now, I think as additional publication on that, you know, we've got community safety for crimes otherwise. Maybe we could have a community dog watch to get rid of those. Maybe we, and I've got some friends, this is a little far-fetched, but Jimmy Garris and I were talking earlier about being bitten as individuals, and Jimmy said he was bitten as a child by a little small dog. I was bitten as a child in the doctor's office by the doctor's dog. But be that as it is, you have from that, but I've got friends in Montana and Colorado that they have vicious dogs and other wild animals that kill their livestock. What do they do? They have a roundup about three times a year. They go out and eliminate those wild animals and wild dogs, pack dogs, vicious dogs that killing their animals. We might consider that here in Pitt County. Yes, ma'am?
I'm a neighborhood watch captain, and what we do is that when people see dogs roaming, if they're neighborhood dogs or dogs they don't identify, they email me, we take a picture, we send it out to try to identify the dog. If we can't, what we like to do is call animal control...
That's the point I'm getting to, honey. All right, thank you. Having said all that, Scott, I think you and Dwayne and your staff has prepared a very specific, very well-written budget to be presented to us. You have followed some of the leads that we've given you, but you've used your administrative and managerial expertisms to show us what we need to do, and I think that there's been some conversation that, Eugene, you mentioned this, I believe, that maybe you need to shift some if you've got that within your purview, and then bring that back to us. That's what you want to do tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
I had two comments, if I could. One, Chairman Owens, on your suggestions on putting more meat in the ordinance. If you'd like the county attorney and myself to go back into, make those revisions or proposed amendments, we'll do that, but I'd like, I guess, the consensus of the board to allow us to do that, and we can bring it back to you.
All right. Mine was a recommendation, and of course, she's the legal counsel, and I know a little bit about it, but I don't give you a legal expert opinion here, but I think you got the picture that I was trying to make.
I support it. I'm not sure about the roundup, but the rest is...
No, I didn't mean...
No, no, I know that, I'm teasing.
I was speaking back there about that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, you are right. You've got to have some meat in that, and you've got to be able to protect the people, and that's the only way you're going to do it. And it's got to get to the owner, James. That's exactly right. There's no question about it. The owner is responsible for his dog, and let it be known that he is.
Tom?
I found out when I got here this morning that there's some talk about some of the redirecting of funds coming from the initial proposal that you had for animal control. Do you plan to come back tomorrow with specifics as far as whatever dollars there are, is how they will be implemented, at what stage or what phase along the way? When will you be hiring people? When will you be spending that money?
Yes, absolutely.
So that we can then say by the time we get to next year?
And actually, in terms of implementation, nothing has changed in regards to the January 1 effective date of the ordinance. It's just that we had fully loaded that budget from July 1 going forward to show a year-over-year comparison, which allowed us some leeway to...
Well, that was my understanding, and that it would probably fall somewhat short of actually spending all that money.
Right. One of the things we didn't know prior to coming into the budget workshops was you, as the commissioners, had directed the ordinance be formulated and presented. We had no idea what you wanted as an effective date, so if you would have said July 1, which would have almost been impossible from a ruling it out standpoint, we wanted to have a budget that could have had a, funding-wise, a July 1 implementation date, even though we did recommend January 1, that now gives us the flexibility to pull some of those dollars out and reallocate, now that we feel that there's consensus for January 1, 2015 date.
But rather than with a broad brush, you're going to have a specific painting that's going to say that if you don't fund certain positions, then the licensing and other things that is going to be generating revenue, it won't happen.
Right.
And so that we, as a board, can recognize that, well, if we do cut this, well, then it could have catastrophic consequences, or maybe the timing can be phased in such that there are no catastrophic consequences. Is that the plan?
Yes, and we will have the detail for you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Scott?
Chairman, one other observation I've just kind of saw as you were talking about the animal control ordinance. We did schedule the public hearing for Monday, June 2, and that is a 9:00 a.m. morning meeting. I'm thinking the following day, at 7:00 p.m., you have the public hearing on your operating budget. Traditionally, you've held your public hearings at nighttime on ordinances. I would almost suggest that we have two public hearings on Tuesday, June 3, one on the operating budget and one on the animal control, because if you have your animal control ordinance Monday at 9, you probably have limited participation by the public. If the board would allow us, we could hold both of those on Tuesday night, but that's just...
I think that's a good idea.
The only problem with that, I see, is that you're going to have your operating budget, but if you're having the public hearing on the dog ordinance, any input by the public at that time is kind of moot, if you do it the same night, I think, but it's...
Now, that would, we will not have approved the budget, and if we get significant input, then we'll have to go back and adjust the budget.
You have until June 30 to approve the budget.
Sure.
Yeah, we've got plenty of time.
Okay, fine, very good. Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you, and I guess we recess again?
Recession again.
No, sir, you're adjourning today, I believe, correct?
Are you meeting again tomorrow?
Oh, I'm sorry, we'll come back in the morning. You're correct, recess.
Who's right and who's wrong?
You're correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Always, Mr. Chairman, you are correct.
We stand recessed until tomorrow morning at 8:30. Correct? Thank you.